Good afternoon and welcome to the special commission meeting for June 24, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Now if we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See clerk, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Mayor Dr.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to start off with public comments, and I have one card, Mark Hoey. That's it.
Listen, I won't hold you up for what will be a very important discussion that you're going to have. I just want to look ahead to the next meeting because then by that point, hopefully, we're in full speed ahead, and I want to have those three key things that need to be talked about. Solid waste outsourcing, I understand there's been some progress made in looking through that. Certainly, the terrain modification manual and trying to negate the negative impacts of that. And then finally, a maybe hopefully come to Jesus meeting about the public safety building and what to do with police and fire. So just looking ahead to that, I know those will probably be topics that you all have as well, but good luck today.
Great, thank you, Mark. And I will close the section for public comments, and we'll get into items of business. The first item of business, appointment of a short-term city manager.
Hi, good afternoon. So just to give and provide a little bit of background on this, we did post for the temporary city manager position that closed on June 13. There were four candidates who were chosen to move forward, Howard Brown, Charles Van Zant, Michael Brillhart, and Taylor Brown. All of you had an opportunity to interview with them, to ask questions, get to know their background, their experience, and we are here today to make an appointment. So I'm going to let you take the floor and begin your discussion.
All right, thank you very much. So does anybody want to start with the, are we going to just go through the four candidates?
I don't, we don't.
We can open this up any way we'd like to do, so it's just free speech at this point.
Rather than go through all four candidates, I'd just like to just to say who our
Maybe top two or something.
One or two are, and then we'll go from there, maybe.
I would agree with that.
All right, we'll start with.
Want to go from here down?
Sure, absolutely, thank you.
My top candidate is Charlie Van Zant, and my second candidate would be Taylor Brown.
And mine would be Howard Brown and Charles Van Zant.
And I would have Howard Brown and Charles Van Zant.
Wow. I've got Taylor Brown as my first choice and Charles Van Zant as my second.
Well, we all agree on one.
Something, we have something in common. And I think that, does anybody want to discuss why the candidates, or do we just want to move forward?
Yeah, no, I'd love to talk about Taylor Brown a bit. He was one of the finalists when we had the position open 10 months ago. I was impressed with him then. I was able to catch up with him on Friday and talk with him for about an hour. I was, first of all, he's, out of all the candidates that we're looking at, he's got the most, he's come closest to meeting the qualifications that we've set out there. He's got 15 years of city manager experience in the state of Florida. He's got economic development experience, both in his current job and further back in his background. But the thing I was most impressed with on my hour-long conversation with him the other day is he, he has genuinely been interested in Treasure Island. Ever since he's left, he continues, way up there in Perry, Florida, continues to watch our commission meetings. He knew, I was just blown away with how much he knew about what was going on here, what the major issues were, who the main, major players are, and he's, you know, for him to have kept that kind of involvement, even with there are no prospects of him being involved in this, was very impressive. But he, he's very solid, like I said, he's the only one with, that checks all the boxes, that has all that level of experience, and he's somebody that can, and he's, and he's ready and available. He's interested in both the short-term and the long-term position. So if we get him in here, we could have an opportunity to watch him perform, see how he does, and see if he's, he's our choice for the long-term position as well. All right.
Yeah, I mean, I, Charlie is really the guy that stood out to me. I think his military service is absolutely impeccable. I think that when you start to look at some of the things he's managed as far as, you know, $400 million budget with 5,000 employees, you know, cutting, cutting things out of their budget, and to be honest with you, the other thing I think is his, is his, you know, relationship he's always had with like the police and the fire. I honestly believe that if we have another disaster of some sort, be it a hurricane or whatever, I think he would be the absolute best guy to have in this role out of all of the candidates. And I think after what we've gone through, I think that's a really important thing. And yeah, I don't, yeah, so I'm going to stop there.
I would say, and I agree, on Charles Van Zant, his military career in leadership and in emergency situations, I mean, he has definitely more experience with that aspect, even though it's not necessarily as a city manager, his, his experience in emergency response is huge. I would also say with Howard Brown, I feel like he too has a lot of experience in that, more in a city manager aspect. Both of them, I'll be honest, again, I don't think we could go wrong with either one of them. I definitely think leadership is the number one thing we need right now, and I think it can really bring our city together. And I truly feel that either one of them could do a wonderful job. You know, Howard Brown does have the experience in development, in responsible development that he's done down in South Florida. Again, I, I really was impressed and liked both of them. To me, that's who it came down to. I truly don't think we could go wrong with either one. And as you mentioned, both of them, when we talked, or when I talked to them, I can speak for myself, obviously, applied for the short term, but both of them said, for different reasons, that they would be also interested in possible long-term if they were here and, you know, we were happy with the job they did, and we wanted to offer them a longer, longer contract, that they definitely would consider that. So that was something I think was pretty much across the board, at least when I interviewed, the feeling that I got was if, if we're happy with them and they're happy here, they'd be happy to stay. But again, I, Charles Van Zant, 100%, I mean, his leadership, I, I have no, no doubt that, and quite frankly, I believe it's what our city needs. I think he could bring it together. But again, I'm open to both. I think either one would be an absolutely fabulous choice.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that we came up with four candidates, and I think all were good candidates. I think that Howard Brown and Charles Van Zant were great candidates. And the reason I say that is that it is all about leadership. That is what we need. I mean, they have the experience, they have the background, they came different directions. You know, Howard came up through municipal, and he basically was doing community development. He was doing code enforcement. He was doing planning. So I mean, he was a very strong candidate, if you're looking for that type of candidate, and I think that we need some of those skills. But Charles Van Zant had a very unique background, military, also was a school superintendent for six years. And, and the leadership abilities and some of the things that he talked about in the interviews, talking about parents, talking about safety for, you know, the children and the community, and I think that we, we really have a strong leader in, in Charles, and that's why, you know, I, I could feel comfortable with either candidate. And so I think that with that being said, does anybody want to change any, anything in their candidate structure? So.
Can I make one more comment? I also, I just really like the fact that he came down here and spent the weekend. I believe he met with some or all of you. I know he, I know he mentioned that he had, he met with me, came over to my house, sat down at the table, and we talked for quite some time, and met my wife and all of that. So I really liked that. Yeah, so.
And I would agree with that. He, and he made mention to me that his wife said they hadn't been down there, if I recall, I think it was 2016, he said they hadn't been down here, and his wife said, if we're going to consider moving there, I at least want to go check the place out. So it was really nice that they came down. He took the time to meet with all of us, but actually came down just to see if Treasure Island was a place that they would possibly want to live if, if it worked out long-term, and they loved it. So I was also glad to actually sit eye to eye and meet with him. Not that that was a necessity, but it was nice to be able to do.
Let me comment on that. He did reach out to me and asked to meet with me as well, and he had said that he had met with you, and I just felt that because I didn't have the opportunity to meet with the other candidates face to face, I thought that would give him an unfair advantage. So I politely declined that, that meeting for that reason, just I didn't want him to be able to do that. I understand perfectly how I'm wanting to come down here, especially because his wife wanted to see what they were getting into, so I understand that completely, but I just felt it would have given him an unfair advantage, and, and I think, you know, with the benefit of what I'm hearing, clearly, it did give him.
Honestly, he was my, he was my choice before I ever met with him, and that's just, I can't speak for anybody else, but that was just a, a nice, you know, little bonus was being able to meet him face to face. But no, he was already, it was already my, they were my top two before I ever met with him. It was just nice, again, just nice to kind of meet face to face, but I understand what you're saying.
And then, and then just one other comment on Taylor Brown, too, because I, my comments earlier, he does have lots of hurricane experience, too. He dealt with Hurricane Adalia three years ago when that came through, and when Hurricane Helene came here and messed us up, landfall was, was right, right where he lives. So he's, he's dealt, he has a lot of hurricane experience and, and probably much worse than what we went through here in Treasure Island. So like I said, he checked all the boxes. I do like Charlie. I, all the reasons that I heard from you, I mean, the fact that he could go from that military experience and become a superintendent of schools in Clay County is impressive. I mean, that's a, and he did that job for, I believe, four or five years, so it wasn't like he, he just did it for a year or something. So that was completely out of any, other than he was a school board member there, so he did have that experience, but that was, that's a big job and to, and to make that kind of adjustment without any experience. So we just need to realize that he doesn't have a lot of the stuff that we thought we wanted to have. Otherwise, he's, you know, he is impressive, and he did make a very good impression at my Zoom call with him and, and reviewing his background.
And I would say on that, no, I'm sorry, not to interrupt.
No, no, go ahead.
With Taylor Brown, I'm a very, very nice man, don't, I absolutely don't question his experience. I just didn't feel he had the leadership. He didn't have the same leadership qualities that I think our city needs right now. And I think that was, that was the big thing for me, is we just, we need a very strong leadership to bring everyone back together, and that was, quite honestly, I couldn't agree with you more. He has, you know, his, his resume speaks for itself. I just didn't feel, you know, there's a right person at the right time for everywhere, and I definitely just, I did not feel that he, that was my only thing with him, didn't quite bring as much of the leadership role as the other two did, and that was, that was my only opinion on that.
I was just going to say, Charlie was on every one of our lists, so I think we should move forward and then go ahead to the beach.
Okay, so what we need to do is we, we need to see if we can easily, yes, why don't we do that? Make, let's make a motion.
I move to select Charles Van Zant to serve as city manager pending contract approval and resolution of appointment to be considered at July 1, 2025, regular meeting, and select the mayor to lead salary negotiations and other contractual agreements.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I came to this meeting prepared for either one of those candidates, for Taylor Brown or for Charles, and I said to myself, if it came to a three to one with I, with me being the one, because I know this needs four votes, I'm not going to hold this up because it's not Taylor Brown. So if, if it, if it's a three, one, we'll go ahead and make it a four. I know we haven't taken the roll call yet, but okay, that's what it appears to be.
All right, thank you. All right, let's have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
I, it was, yes.
Yay, yes.
Congratulations to Charles, Charlie.
Yeah.
We'd be done.
Okay, so we only have one other item here, and that is the severance agreement with Charles Anderson.
Actually, can I address one thing before we go there?
Yes.
Which is regarding SGR. So just some direction regarding the full-time permanent position, because I know that at the last meeting, it was discussed to maybe forego that and do the temporary into a direct hire for permanent. So what is your direction regarding SGR? Are we going to post the position and continue on that, that path where they would, this person, Charlie, would also apply through SGR, and we would go through the hiring process that way, or would you prefer not to?
No, I, I think that, that is what we had agreed upon previously in a meeting, so yes, let's continue the search with SGR.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, can I just say, I mean, if, if for some reason, it could go both ways, right? Charlie comes in and does terrible, Charlie comes in and does amazing, I mean, at some point, if, if the guy's doing amazing, do we really need to, would we, I guess, will there be any leniency as far as we would go through this, then still go through the entire process? You know, I.
That's going to be my question.
Because, I mean, like I said, it could go either way. Maybe we have to bump up the search because we made a horrible decision, I don't think that's going to happen, but it could go the other way where the guy comes in and makes immediate impact, and we're like, Jesus, we can't let this guy go, then are we really going to go through some huge search? And I, I wasn't here for all the last one, but I heard it was just like super long, and like the public came in, and the, and I mean, and Mr. Brown, Taylor Brown made it sound like, I mean, it was like a, quite the process. So I'm just trying to figure out, I guess it's our hire, so we could decide, but, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, I, I agree with you. It's, you know, we're looking for a permanent, and it's not to say he can't be the permanent, or even the other three could get back in with SGR.
Mayor, could I suggest something here, too? That I like the idea of allowing Charles to have a probationary period, for lack of a better term, before we aggressively start looking for another candidate.
I would agree.
If we, if, if maybe a month or two into it, now, I do realize that we could pursue the search without any additional cost to the city.
Yes.
As far as, but we put it out there, so I guess what I'm saying is, is if he's the, if he's doing good for two or three months, we can save ourselves a lot of, a lot of trouble and not have to go through this.
Because in a perfect world, we're one and done.
Actually, though, I'm not, I'm not sure if we have, if we have that window available to us. So we, the way the statement of work and the, and the scope and the, what SGR provided to us, the proposal, we had one year, and that one year will expire on August 1. And even though we have not had Chuck in this position, he, I'm, I'm not sure if we go past that August 1 date, if those, if, if it still applies, that we would not have to then pay the, the professional fees as well. So I can check into that. My concern is, is that if we start the process with SGR, and then we decide to change route in the middle, it's, it's extraordinarily disruptive. So now you've got candidates who have put their names in. If we go through SGR, then we get a fully robust background, we get more information, we go through this, the entire process as we had planned to do from the beginning. So I can appreciate wanting to go, not go through that whole process, but I think that there are probably ways that we can make it not so long of a process as it was last time. However, I'm just concerned that we may lose that opportunity with SGR if we wait.
Two questions. It was going to go beyond August anyway, right? Because we said it was going to take six months supposedly to get this done, so.
But we would have started the search prior to.
Okay, well, maybe we can make a decision by August, August 1. I disagree with you, Arden, with what you said, with the kind of the probation period, not have to go through the whole process. I mean, John's, John's point was we had four good candidates and two excellent candidates. So that's what you said earlier. So if two of them are excellent, hopefully, one of them is excellent enough to work out.
I agree.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, I think what we need, more than anything, is just to start plowing forward, and, and, and I think this has been one of our biggest hurdles. And I think, I think I don't want to get too off track, but I think if we could get through this, and then we can finally get through whatever happens with the fire station, we can, we'll all be, I think, moving forward and agree on a lot of things, and hopefully start to get stuff done.
And I would agree with that.
So I think, I think a huge drawn-out search is just gonna, gonna just muck up the whole process again, so I, I don't know how we do it, but again, I think this is our hire up here, right? So we can decide what we want to do. So I mean, I just want to make sure that I point that out. So I mean, I just want to make sure that I point that out.
And I would kind of take off of that from what, what you said. I, I think with, between the hurricanes, everything the city's been through, the turnovers, everything else, I think, and I 100% get where you're coming from because it's at, no, and that was kind of the original. So I do understand that. But then on the other side, it's, I think, having the stability, the potential stability of having, it's like I'm almost willing to risk it, even though after August 1, you know, it's no longer free of charge, which we were still going to have to pay for transportation and things like that, correct? It wasn't.
Yeah, the bulk of the fees though, or the professional fees.
Right, which I get.
And we would not, right, so we wouldn't have.
Right, which I get. But I think, again, just an opinion, I think having the stability and the residents feeling like we have the confidence in the person that we've chosen, that person knowing, the staff feeling like we truly had the confidence in that person, I just feel like that goes a long way. And that's, again, that's just my, my feeling on it. I, and I 100% agree. I think if we can get past this, I think we really can start moving forward, which is what our city needs. And that's, that's my opinion.
And I also don't see why we couldn't get a bunch of names together and keep the search going until at least August 1. I guess stopping, what are they going to do, get mad at us? I mean, I don't, I don't, are we going to, we're not going to have any contractual thing that we broke, right? I mean, I just, I don't, I don't know.
You're right. Let me just say, the one thing that, and I'm going to say, you know, why I went for Charles Van Zant, or Van Zant, and, you know, that he was a school superintendent from 2012 to 2016. He oversaw 37,000 students, which I think you had mentioned earlier. And he had a budget, I don't have the budget right, yeah, I do.
400 million.
$400 million budget. And I mean, he showed me some of the, did show what we talked about when he was here, that the things that were taking place in a school district and, you know, the, the maintenance, the capital spending and everything else. And he's on top of his game. There's no doubt about it. Has multiple degrees and military experience. So I think that maybe we've got the right guy.
Okay.
But it does make it kind of difficult where we are right now with SGR. I agree with you.
And that was just something that I wanted to point out so you all could make the decision. And so I would have clear direction if I'm advising SGR to stand down at this time. And we're going to put it on pause, knowing that we've got a short window of time in which to start, you know, begin conducting that search if we choose to.
I, I mean, my opinion is we pause it.
Yeah, me too.
I think we pause it.
I agree.
And I think that pausing it probably means that, that we're not going to meet that deadline in August 1, so.
All right. So the next step then is that the one thing that would have occurred at a much deeper dive would be the background check. So I will do that to the best of my ability. I may actually still reach out to SGR with the acting city manager's approval to maybe conduct that background for us. They have a lot more resources than I do available to them. There will be a cost associated with that, but I don't believe it's extraordinarily high. And it's a cost we would have probably paid anyway had we gone forward with using them. So that is one thing that I would like to do because, like I said, I just don't, I don't have the availability of the resources that, that SGR does.
I think that would be great.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Before we move on, I hate to throw this on, out there, but regarding the contract discussions and stuff like that, I'd like us to avoid, for lack of a better term, salary creep. There's this strong tendency, I think, for every time we bring a new person, we have to pay them more than the old person. We paid Chuck more than we paid Amy Davis, and Amy Davis made more than the previous person. I would hope that we could bring somebody in for the same, in the same salary range that Chuck was in. And I know we're entrusting that negotiation to you, but I just wanted to offer one commissioner's opinion on that.
Great, thank you. All right, with that, we will adjourn.
Nope, we never did that. One severance.
Oh, so one more item.
That's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. What do we need to do with the severance? I was thinking that we are, so now we're back in.
There you go. Thank God you found that hammer earlier, it was lost.
At this time, I'm going to need to defer to our attorney regarding the severance, the next steps for that. And then also, because we're going to have to do them simultaneously, so it'll be the severance of Chuck Anderson and then as well as the contract for Charles Van Zant.
You can move to approve the severance right now and have that executed. And then you've given him direction to sign the contract. You can literally probably call Mr. Van Zant today and we'll just take the old contract and then amend it slightly. I mean, if it's the wish of the commission to keep it similar, substantially similar, we can get that whipped up today before 5 o'clock. I'll be here all day. And then shoot that to him, have him put his notes back, and then I'll distribute it to you guys. And then at the next meeting, you can actually vote it in.
Good.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
So then, just for clarity, as far as the severance, so we need to go ahead and extend that to that July 1 or?
Yeah, then that, yeah, so that would be Tuesday. So yeah, you can extend it to Tuesday. You can make that part of your motion, approving the severance with a continuation, continuation date of July 1, or was that 2nd? Yeah, 1st.
All right, are you guys good with that?
For the motion? Yep.
All right. I move to authorize the mayor to execute the severance agreement with Chuck Anderson through July 1, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll, please.
Vice Mayor Vasquez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dickey?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Dr.
Aye.
Thank you.
Is it possible that we can adjourn in less than 30 minutes?
Unbelievable.
It's 1:29. We're adjourned.